So it's camera four here. This has some audio. This will be some good audio, I think. So the timestamp is pretty accurate. It's only like a minute behind.
Lippy again, instead of a complex after. It would be a step in that direction. We have to wait.
All right. That's all I have.
All right. That will take us past everything else that we have. We are now moving to audience participation. So if you'd like to come forward. Take your time. We're good.
I've been reading this a while. I forgot where I was going. Ah, hee-haw. I'm Gordon Wayne Watts, the son of Bobby Watts, who recently passed away. And before I get going, there's gonna be some difficult things I'm gonna say about the police. And most of the police are really good. This guy, let me bring my drink. I'm not gonna make a mess. Uh, Mr. Walker-
Did you say? State your name, sir.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm Gordon Wayne Watts, the son of Bobby Watts. And Commissioner Kohler has a copy of written materials that are supplementary to what I said. But what I said is seen. Well, um, the ledger is not here, so I guess you guys get an extra copy with a little flash drive. So-
Actually, that is, that's-
Ledger is there.
Oh, the ledger. Okay, hold on. Okay. Uh, we had a, this is, we had a ledger here. The ledger, uh, okay. Okay, so, um, I want to just go through. The, uh, Gordon Wayne Watts, what I, when I, no, I'm a lawyer. Commissioner Walker used to be a cop. But before I say anything, I want to thank him for accepting my apology. When I really did run for office by disenfranchised voters, I was in that, that election scam that, uh, that shut the primary down. I apologized to him, and he accepted my apology. It may have cost him the election. But before I begin my presentation, I want to know one thing. You were a cop. Did the cops, is it okay for the cops to block a person's phone from calling the police department? Is it yes or no? I mean, probably most people have said no. But I just want to know, during your practice, did they, did they ever do that?
You asked me the question?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Did it block by calls?
Yeah, yeah. It's called, hey, I see, I see someone on the side of the road. Kind of suspicious looking. It could create a wreck.
I can't tell you yes or no. I would have think they did.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, most people, every person that I've talked to, including police officers, have all said no, except one person, Detective Elisa Martin. And the reason I say that is because my phone was blocked, and it, and I have documented evidence that I've given to you guys. Now, the, she told me, uh, when the PSO came out, "Oh, we're only blocking your non-emergency calls." Now, to begin with, I, I want to apologize to, um, former Mayor Wiggs. He's gone. And Mayor Muttz, who, I should have reported this sooner. But as soon as I attempted to report this item, the police department sent me a message that they were gonna use heavy-handed tactics of making me out to be a harassing phone caller. And I'm not a harassing phone caller. I mean, I like the things, but most of you guys know if I don't like it, I appeal to the higher authority or I let it go. Now, what happened was, when I called the police department to report some perjury, where the police report said one thing and the audio said something different, okay? And, um, they got upset about this thing and, um, blocked my phone. So the bottom line is that I'm telling you is that when I tried to get a copy of the call to the police department in which I asked to speak to the chief, knowing that I, that the Internal Affairs already gave me the cold shoulder when I reported to them that they had refused to release under discovery something to my public defender, okay? So I was arrested, 'cause I'm, I'm a bad guy, okay? But please listen to me and hear me out. What I'm saying is that I called on a different matter. And the police, uh, the young woman said, "No, I want you to speak to the chief. You have to call Internal Affairs." And I said, "Elisa Martin and Deborah Moore, who were the detectives at that time, um, they, they gave me the cold shoulder, and I was afraid that I would get falsely arrested." And I told her I did not feel comfortable. I did not want to talk to them. She insisted that I talk to them, so I left her a message. And so later, when I tried to get a copy of the audio tape showing that I was only following orders and I was not a harassing phone caller, I wasn't calling back. I was trying to talk to the chief. To use, I was going at the chief of command. Okay, a friend of mine said he talked to the chief, and so I wanted to talk to the chief. They would not release that audio tape and that documented proof. They said that they were gonna charge me $2,000 for one single call on one single day at a specific time. Now, you guys, this gentleman back here, he can ask his tech people. When you give them a timing date and you say, "I want a copy of that," they'll ask you questions like, "What was the dispatcher's number?" And all kind of crazy stuff. I kept waiting for this. Now, granted, I want to tell you, blocking someone's phone is not justified whether they're harassing phone caller or not. If I made a harassing phone call, they could arrest me. If I made 911 abuse, I would be arrestable. But there was an era back then, and you guys remember, it was so corrupt that I was guilty until proven innocent. And without a copy of the record showing the dispatcher told me to call the Internal Affairs and not me, I was following orders, I would be painted, be, uh, oh. So the bottom line is that was the reason for the delay. Um, now, the results of the area issue of the 911 blocking, they said that it didn't happen, but it did. And I give documented proof. And, and I know that y'all guys can't make a decision on this, but I want to present it publicly so that it can get looked at because then the other abuses can get looked at because this is so egregious. What phone, what phone has ever been blocked by any cop? Ever? And then 911 was blocked too. I'll be here for questions if you would like. I'll give a sworn statement, and I'll answer questions about anything. So if you not, would like to extend time to question me, I will. If not, it's up to you.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Watts? Yes, Commissioner.
How do, how do you, if I make a call, how do I know my call is being blocked?
Well, you get the phone, not me to certify it. And you get witnesses that say it's blocked. And then you call from another phone and it's not blocked. You get witnesses, you get experts. You call, and then the detective, Elisa Martin, in the presence of PSO Ryan Christopher Schiff admitted it. You throw them under oath, and you will see what will happen. Next question?
And your, and your call was blocked from now?
Well, uh, well, not initially. We, well, we think it wasn't. I think I was able to call 911. But then, just late last year, before my father, right after my father passed away, you know, when I ran the Bobby Watts Speed Talk, we were getting evicted, and there was a huge wreck. And I tried calling 911 from the same phone number, okay? The same phone number. It was ported over, but it's the same phone number. And it wouldn't. And I have certified evidence of that showing the screenshots and the whole line of dirt. There are nine videos with, there, there are different ways they block it. One way is very, I won't even say it. It was a very unique way. I'll just put, this was not even either a location method, but it was a third way. There was testimony. Those nine interviews of different people and forensic evidence, even on 911, these shouldn't be blocking, okay? If I had done anything that was illicit, they would have either got me for harassing phone calls or 911 use. That they didn't, proving I did nothing in this. Even if I did, you can't block a phone. It's a due process issue. It's a, it's a red flags issue. It puts lives in danger too. I had to call from a different phone to get the, 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 there was a huge wreck out there in late November or December, whatever it was, in I, uh, Memorial Boulevard. And I couldn't call 911 for the blocked phone. I had to call from a different phone. What if I didn't have a different phone?
Thank you.
Okay? Um, I will apologize for the time delay, but-
That's right. Who have you met with at the police department?
Well, uh, so many people that I'll, I'm surprised I'm not falsely arrested second time. Uh, and every cop I've ever talked to, and I list a long line of them in my narrative, um, the, the narrative that's more detailed, um, is in a color copy. Or if you go to the link on my website, it says supplemental brief. The videos, I wish I had a second flash drive. I had a sec, I had a second one, but I was cheap. But the, the website is actually more robust than even what I gave the ledger to you guys. Uh, there were so many people I talked, every cop except Detective Elisa Martin said, "We can't do it. We couldn't do it. We wouldn't do it. It's not even possible for us to block it." And then, that was before we even knew the 911 blocking was going on.
If I could answer a question, um, Mr. Watts, taking a look at this information, did this incident initially occur in 2006?
That's right. I was wondering when someone would bring that point up. And the reason that you bring it up is because it's a good point. Why? Many years later, when I, I kept trying to get those records. Uh, 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 Mr. Delgado, what if you were accused of making harassing phone calls in an era when corruption were guilty until proven innocent? And you kept trying to get the records showing that you were not a harassing phone caller? I would have come to the city commission the same day it happened had I gotten the record showing that I was only following orders and I was not a harassing phone caller. I'd had, without those records, I would be painted into a troublemaker. But now, many years later, with the additional correction that occurred and the denial of the release of the public records and the proven perjury, and of course, regular blocking and 911 blocking, and the fact that, you know me as a person, never lies, now I finally feel comfortable. And besides, if I want to say something now and someone dies, their blood is on my hands. I must speak up now or forever hold my peace. I would love to have come, I went to a lot of people. Then very, that very time it happened if I had called from a different phone. I told the dispatcher that very day. I went to so many people. If I had gotten one more person, Mr. Delgado, I'd be under the jail and I wouldn't be able to be here today. So I did my part in signing.
Thank you for that information.
Okay. And it was not your fault. Most of the cops, 90% of them or greater, are good. They are not looking for trouble. And the few put, they ain't put place these lives of these many, many good cops are placed in danger because a few bad cops didn't love that name. And the court, when it had evidence that the cops wrote one thing in the report and the dispatcher did not tell me to get the heck out of the area, but they said that in the report, is that perjury or is that not? Your lawyer, you tell me. Is it perjury when a cop says the dispatcher told him A and the dispatcher said B but not A? Didn't say A. Is that perjury? Simple perjury? Is that a, a crime or not? I was told by the state attorney's office against. That's what got me in trouble in the first place. Me reporting the perjury. They blocked the phone in retaliation. And then they intimidated me by refusing to release the exculpatory records showing that they, I was following orders of the dispatcher to call IAN, not me calling them as a harassing phone caller. Not that that was justified, but you get the picture.
Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Oh, or any other questions? I'll hang out, but if not, y'all probably need time to digest this stuff.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having me. May God bless you.
Okay. Any other, uh, audience comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Cunningham. State your name at the podium.
Uh, yes, I'm Paul Cunningham, Lakeland resident. And I've got another issue I want to discuss, but just to take a minute, uh, about the previous one about the Lakeland project. I was hearing maybe-
Hey, just got somebody on here. I would favor to signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. unanimously passes.
Oh, aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to the audience.
Okay, um, um, I'm Gordon Watts. Um, I could have gone to the- Yeah, I'll give the, the, uh, reading material that I have, um, I'm signed off right now. Live video thing or whatever. I'm disorganized. Um, okay, so, okay, can I? There's, uh, one copy for the Lakeland ledger girl.
Oh, sure.
And there's all the rest. There's nine for the seven commissioners. And for, um, and for, um, the city commissioner and the city attorney. Okay, um, so, I don't know if I'm doing this right. I'm trying to do it live here. Um, in any event, y'all guys are gonna be recording it. So in any event, I'll just sort of sit and excuse my place. Okay, um, first off, I want to thank you guys for acknowledging the last time, but this time. Okay, oh, I'm Gordon Wayne Watts, a former resident of, uh, Lakeland. And I'm currently in a top secret undisclosed location light years away in another galaxy called East Hillsburg County. Um, so, so I'm so poor, it's light years away from me. I want to thank you guys for the previous times and this time for letting me come here. Um, also, um, I want, I want to thank, I can't remember his name. He's this really old guy that's been there in the Lakeland Police Department. He gave me a free copy of camera three of Michael Dunn's video and showed him the differences where things were coming at him. And so the Lakeland Police Department is getting better. And I want to apologize to the late police officer Chuck Dallas and his family. If I had prosecuted this case like I would like to, like I should have, he would not have continued on his path and probably broken the law with a seatbelt and got himself killed. And he, he was a bad guy. He really, and most of the cops, by the way, are good. They made me feel welcome. Let me come in here with food. And most cops don't know about the 911 blocking, the regular call blocking. And you can ask them. There's a lot of them here. I mean, there were six cops here. Uh, there was one cop the last time. There were six cops now. Um, I scare you guys, but in all seriousness, the security is good. Um, so now, what happens is, I gave y'all some handouts here. And now, I'm a Christian, and I'm gonna have to face the maker. And there's forgiveness. I'm not going after blood. Um, but at the same time, what if a member of your family, a daughter was kidnapped for 13 years, okay? In hell for 13 years. And then only let out under pressure, okay? Would you say at the end of that time, "Oh, we'll just forgive and forget"? No. Of course not. You would, you would forgive the person and not wish to go after them, you know, ridiculously. But at the same time, you'd say, "Hey, how many other people are they gonna do this to?" I documented there. I want to go over, I mean, there was, there were basically a refusal for them to comply with the chapter 119 laws, which would show that they were not justified in blocking my phone. They were gonna, they gave me this message. They sent me a message, basically, "We're gonna say that you're a harassing phone caller." All right? We're gonna use that as justification. But back then, things were so corrupt, and you know it, okay? This, uh, one woman got $25,000 for just one day of her, her bra being searched improperly. It was, it was a search that they needed to be done, but it was a, a male police officer. Now, what happened to me and my family happened for decades, and it placed lives in danger. Both regular and 911 blocking documented with, with our hearing witnesses. And, uh, Tony Delgado was telling me that y'all guys need more time. And I don't blame you. There was a few visits to my website, but not as many as should have been. And so, um, I believe y'all guys are gonna need some more time. But the point that I'm making is that, um, what I'm saying is that if, if this went on, and it went on, and it went on, and I didn't do anything, I would be able to live with myself as a Christian, knowing that I did step up and do something. And so the point that I'm making is that there was documented perjury, all right? The refusal to release the records back then. The, the, the people, uh, the records department are honest now. An illegal refusal to comply with a public records request showing that I had not made harassing phone call calling Internal Affairs just to follow orders, which, which shows that the call blocking, which was illegal anyhow, was very unjustified. Not just unjustified. I reported to Internal Affairs and then tried to recall the police chief to report perjury, okay? Um, and, and the perjury were, were a cop said one. The, the dispatcher said, "Get out of this area. There, there's an investigation." And the dispatcher didn't say that. Your attorney should have listened to the video. And I'll have questions about that. Which justified a false arrest? And also, there was an illegal trial by jury, which was a cop's things, not a force's things. Okay? And there was also some other illegal things. Uh, some of the cops had been illegally preventing people from getting up on street corners. So I have a question for the city attorney. I know you may need some more time. I'm not pressuring you. But did you or did you not have a chance to listen to the video where the cops said, uh, one thing and the report said another with regards to, um, the, the reasons for, uh, the, the justification for their false arrest? In other words, they said, the dispatcher said, "Get out of this area." Um, and the dispatcher, you listen to the audio, and she didn't. Did you or did you not get a chance to? How about you guys? I would like to see if you guys have questions of me. And also, I would like to find out whether y'all have questions of me. But I would like a, a direct answer. I'm not, if you didn't have time, you didn't have time. But did you have time? What did you find out? And do you have any questions of me? You want me to repeat my question? Did, did, okay, did you? Okay, did you or did you not have a time to listen to that audio? Would you respect? Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Hmm. The, the attorney didn't answer my question.
Oh, man. So they actually sounded vulnerable. They didn't have time to answer.
No, no, he doesn't. I'm just saying, okay? No, any, any questions or no? Okay. I'll give y'all guys some more time, in all fairness.
Yes, Paul Cunningham, Lakeland resident. Just want to finish up on some things, um, earlier, um, about Lakeland Regional. Um, that hundred acres that-
I'm Commissioner Madden.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, this is old news to my colleagues on the commission. They heard it at the utility committee meeting. But for anyone listening, I also wanted to just give a big shout out to Lakeland Electric's Gina Jacoby and Joey Curry, who spearheaded an initiative to, um, analyze all of our disaster response processes in Lakeland Electric. Um, certainly, you can understand that going through the FEMA process and getting as much money back as possible is huge for our, the success of our utility. And they went above and beyond by, um, working alongside Bob Ross, who is even retired, and came alongside to work on a solution along with Connie Rossman and Matthew Crock, along with Cory Bush. And, um, they were able to build an application that gives real-time access to our poles and our grid, um, to be able to analyze, uh, and, and have a, one, you know, real-time place where we can collect all the information that we need for disaster recovery, um, on our, uh, assets. And so that streamlining of our data collection process, all in the single repository for disaster restoration data has become a best practice. And we were able to hear Joey Curry and Cory Bush present at FMEA. And as they presented, there were numerous, uh, other municipally-owned utilities who wanted to copy what we had done here in Lakeland. And one city already has done that. So I just really appreciate outside-the-box innovative thinking and want to, at any chance that we can, to reward that and encourage that. Um, and so, big shout out to all of them. And then also, this week, uh, was able to, with, um, some other, uh, my colleagues, go to the summer works reception. So that is our program within the city that gives students an opportunity to work in jobs and, and shadow and to be interns to find out more about careers that, that would be open to them. So we had some bright young students recognized that they went through the summer works program this summer and some success stories, um, talking about those who have had those internship opportunities go on to work with those companies and work within our city. So that was really exciting. That's something I'd like to see even expand further. I know the mayor, um, has wanted to incorporate a mentor program and to give students opportunity and access to jobs and career shadowing. So, um, I just really thought I'd, you know, to be remiss if I didn't mention that we did have that program and that they did have reception last week to celebrate those students in the summer works program.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing and hearing none, we are adjourned.
Is that getting your print copy?
Oh, thanks, sir.
You still are a print. And if you aren't, you've been recalled into duty.
In a, in a manner, I suppose.
You've been recalled into duty. The Klingon High Counselor has amended.
Yeah.
Hey, um, you still do blog a little bit, right?
A little.
A little. You're gonna be blogging a little bit more, I'm sure.
Let me, I, I got, I got far in the-
Okay. I'm just joking around. Thank you for giving me ten extra seconds and, and apologize. I, I owe you one for that because it was my own fault that I failed to hold up my card. And I had a spare one. And so you can have it.
You gave us one, is that-
No, 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 no. This is brand new, and you're the only one that has that one. There was just two. And there was, um, there was double-sided. And so I printed one on one side as this one. So I was gonna hold it up, and I gave Billy Townsend one. And now, um, when people, I don't want to be morbid, but when people click the button, they go and visit and the other side, they feel the pain of the people they encountered, okay? And for reasons I don't know, I've been having fears of death. But, I mean, we all were, too. Now, um-
Except you know where you're headed.
Right. I hope to God I am. I'm, listen-
You know Jesus is-
I do, I do. But listen to me. I'm not worthy of Him. And I, my faith in Him is weak. But His faith in me is strong, and at least I'm glad for that. And so, um, um, thank you, by the way, for giving credit to, and I, I'm, I'm not worthy of it, but I'm not ashamed either. I will mention His name as, as the sole person of the service to worship. But at the same time, I don't get saved by my works, but my works are very important. And so I can't let this drop. But your job is hard. You, you just, you didn't ask for any of this. And so I'm gonna prosecute my case. Um, know that for a certainty. But your job is hard. And I put myself in your shoes. Because maybe one day, the Klingon High Counselor will pick me up on your spot, Jesus being the High Counselor. And, and it'll be a hard job. And, and so what I'm saying is that, um, I know that y'all might need some more time. Tony has said that he needs more time. And I was pressing you guys to see whether y'all had reviewed this. And y'all have not visited my website as much. But one good thing, one of you guys visited my website shortly after I put the little update about the, "I need more time" thing. And that might, I bet that was probably you. Was that you? That was you. So in other words, you got there, and it was red and highlighted yellow. And you saw, "Need more documentation." And you downloaded it. You had a second copy. 'Cause you're the mayor, you got the first copy. Now you have a Klingon copy. So that was you that got that copy, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Because you're the mayor, the weight of the world was on your shoulders. So in any event, I want to let you know that I'm far from perfect. Um, and I'm very sad about that. But, um, gonna do what I can.
We all are.
I'm trying to do what I can, um, Bill, to, to give you the breathing room that you need. But also, if I were in your shoes, I'd want some pressure. I would love some pressure because it would give you an excuse to press on this case. So in any event, I just want to hang around. What about, hey, hey, did you get a chance to look at my website? Or you need more time? Need more time? Okay, okay, got it. We're cool. So in any event, these guys are busy and, and, um, and so in any event, um-
Thank you.
I, I just, I want you to let, I just want to let you know that, um, that I'm, I'm impatient and all that. But it's like, I waited this long, 13 years. You know what I'm saying? I mean, come on. But the, the thing of it is, I kept asking, and I kept asking, and I kept asking for the release of that public record showing that I had made harassing phone calls. The dispatcher asked me, the, the last call that wasn't blocked was obviously the one that got me blocked. And so I want to find out what was going on there. Well, actually, I knew what was going on. I didn't have the tape recorder running on my end. And I wanted to come forward, but they would have made harassing phone call charges. And I wouldn't have had, I was guilty until proven innocent back in that era. And I was supposed to be psychic, and I wasn't. But no one can blame me, except myself. And maybe I won't blame myself. I could have done better, but I didn't. In any event, though, um, you guys can download the electronic copies of these things.
If, if we took your phone, though, right now and dialed 911, what would happen?
Well, now, it might get through and it might not. Um-
You want to do it?
Well, no, but you can't test it. It might, if you, it was-
I'll, I'll take the blame when they answer.
Yeah.
No, seriously, I would.
Would you like to? Okay. All right. Well, we'll-
Just so you know.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is, okay, I'll, um, I'll let you do it. Um, hold, oops. Okay. Okay, so in any event, well, first, we're gonna try, we're gonna try it both ways. First, we're gonna try the regular way. I'm gonna try calling them at 834, I'm sorry, 86-
Dial 911.
No, no, I'm gonna do both of them because both of them report. 834, oops, 8, hold on, back. 834-6900. Okay, I'm gonna call-
Dispatch number, the number, the number-
Hello, Lakeland Police.
Yeah, this Mayor Bill Muttz and I are here and we're discussing whether or not I'm blocked. And he's requested, we, we checked out the 911.
That's why we called.
Yeah, so we're gonna test both the regular and the 911. I let him do the actual call of the 911 to see if it's blocked or not because this was a big thing in the city council. So, so do the local, y'all don't have me blocked now, right? Actually, okay, don't have me blocked. Okay, so I'm gonna hang up.
Up, up there. So you're on speakerphone. Come on, speakerphone. Wait, now you're on speakerphone. Okay.
Hello, Lakeland 911. How can I help you?
Yes, this was just a test call. This is Bill Muttz, and I apologize. Thank you.
Your first name, please?
This is Bill.
Okay.
And, and he's using my phone. I'm Gordon Wayne Watts. I'm the guy that complains about the 911 blocking and-
I'm, I'm mayor, Bill Muttz.
Yes.
So we're just checking something.
Okay. You're, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Okay, good.